About one minute. If you could take your seats, thank you. Well, we do need our clerk. Okay, it's seven o'clock. I want to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order. I wonder if we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silent prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Millamway.
Here.
Alderman Stern.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Howman.
Here.
Alderman Freen.
Here.
Madam Renner. Here. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move to public comment, and we have public comment and up to three minutes. And I'm going to go ahead and call the first person that I have here, Mr. Ron Schultz. Good evening.
Do you need my address or anything?
Um, I think at this point, you don't have to, but twelve, you can, you can state it for the record if you want.
Uh, 1208 East Oakland, Bloomington, Illinois. Anyway, I'm Ron Schultz, and I was reading the paper the other day. I caught a part of an article that said that there's a possibility that there's going to be about $500,000 in real estate taxes, is it or not totally accounted for yet as to where they will be spent or, or if they'll be spent or whatever. But anyway, at this point in time, I'd like to put in my vote that we would put this and add it to the retirement funds that have already been started, and I must say they've been, it's been a good job. I think that the council is really trying hard to, to manage that retirement fund. It's, in my opinion, it's very difficult to manage. It's huge. But it has to be paid, is it? That's all there is to it. I was doing some calculating earlier, using nine percent per year as what I would call a prudent return over the long term. $500,000 in five years would yield $782,841. In 10 years, it would become $1,225,000. 15 years, it'd be $1.9 million. 20 years, it would be $3 million. And of course, in 25 years, I don't know if this is relevant, but it would be $4.7 million, and in 30 years, $7.4 million. So you see, the $500,000, in my opinion, would best be used for the purpose of diminishing the future expenses, which will have to be picked up by all of us, our children, our families. And even if we put the $500,000 to use, I would be happy to see any extra besides that put to use, because the compounding is magic, and it does amount to an awful lot of money, and it will hopefully relieve the stress on future generations and keep this great city great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Mr. Gary Lambert.
Evening.
Good evening.
Name's Gary Lambert, 30, 18, East Oakland. Last Monday, a member of the council tried to ask a question at the end of the meeting regarding the joint meeting to be held the next night. She was not allowed to do so. After the meeting, I asked why. The answer I got was that that was because it was not on the agenda. I went out to the Attorney General's website today. If an item is not listed on the posted agenda for regular meeting, is the public body prohibited from taking action on that item at the meeting? Yes. Open Meetings Act permits discussion, not forbids it, permits it during regular meetings of items not specifically set forth on the agenda. The Open Meetings Act, however, does not permit taking of a vote on such a matter. So she should have been allowed to ask her questions. On another matter, I saw the proposed budget for next year, and it kind of got me going a little bit. Those that know me know I'm a little bit of a history buff. In fact, after I retired from Caterpillar, I went back to ISU and got a degree in history. But for recent history, this is my recollection of it. I didn't go back and research it. About 16 months or thereabouts, I go, we decided, or finally decided, to do something about the condition of our roads. And I believe they came up with a plan to spend about $4 million for the next 10 years or so to try and get it back up to snuff a little bit. Then we came up in August, I believe, and said, oh, we'll just go out and borrow $10 million. So the headline the next day was, "That'll give us $14 million to spend on the roads." Shortly after that, we said, oh, no, we're only going to spend the borrowed money on maintaining our roads. The last I heard, and it, it's not accurate at all, but it's somewhere close, we ended up spending something less than $10 million on roads this year. I see in the budget that's being proposed, if I read it right, we're only slotting $1 million, just the amount that the tax was, it was increased last year. I believe, in fact, one councilman last fall said that they would not vote for that increase or that borrowed money if we didn't commit to the ongoing expenditure of the $4 million a year. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alton Franklin. I live at 508 Patterson Drive here in Bloomington, Illinois. I'd like to echo what Mr. Schultz had to say. I do believe that any time that we can get some discretionary funds, if we can call them that, that we should apply it to the single item that I believe should carry the most weight, and that it is an obligation that we should, that we should be meeting in the best manner that we can come up with. On matters of different nature, I've had a couple of rather curious communications. I was told that I was refreshing, in that I changed my garb. I don't know what's refreshing about a man taking off his hat, but, and I don't know why anybody would have to preach it to the council, but I hope everybody was as amused as I was. I wish I could say I was amused about the, uh, the second item. Point in fact, I was disappointed. When we disparage our citizens, when we minimize what they're doing, however we feel personally on the subject, it diminishes us. Respect is a rather curious thing. Takes a long time to earn it, takes about that long to lose it, and it takes even longer coming back. I really don't know why we're starting to see some of these rather perul and infantile behaviors on the parts of people who should be showing greater responsibility, greater action. One of the things I have seen is I have seen some improvements, and I'd, I'd like to thank David Hale, our city manager. I've noticed that in our program this evening, that there was a more detailed discussion in regards to the whys we do things. And I appreciate your response on my request from, uh, from previous. I, I'm sure that I'm not the only one, so I'm not going to take credit or anything. I give all credit to Mr. Hale. He's done, he's done a great job with getting the information out there. In all, like I say, I, I've got certain issues that I really have strong feelings about, personal integrity, and one of those, I do my best to speak to the facts and only the necessary facts. I do my best to look at things in the most positive light that I can find. The council's been doing some good work, but I hope I don't see continued degeneration in the fashion that I have seen here lately. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Patricia.
Today, I'd like to talk about abusive situations that affect in particular the so-called vulnerable generations, children, the disabled, and the elderly, especially women. There are network of organizations in our communities dealing with such crimes, and I will mention several that have made a considerable impact on me recently. One is PATH, a crisis program operating around the clock telephone service. The program also has an adult protective services section dealing with various types of abuse, physical and emotional, acknowledging that the effects of emotional abuse can be as devastating as those of physical abuse. The police department has a domestic violence unit which just sponsored a visual reenactment called In Her Shoes. Neville House, part of Mid-Central Community Action, also with a 24-hour hotline service, acts as a shelter for women of all ages, a recent range including those from 16 to 80, and can also arrange protective housing for men. I attended a candlelight vigil sponsored by Neville House and also In Her Shoes, myself and other participants reading printed stories about victims and then discussing them afterwards. Both programs were particularly moving, for despite the sharing of distressing personal stories, a real closeness was achieved, which will hopefully result in mutual healing. Still, why did these crimes continue to happen? One prevalent answer given by members of these groups was the lack of strong legislation, tradition, and the fear of personal embarrassment and retaliation. These are genuine fears, for aggressors are often trying to protect themselves, and if they are connected with a facility, the reputation of the facility is at stake too. In the process, the victim might find himself or herself battling not only the aggressors, but their supervisors and friends. How can victims develop a safe place for themselves? Speak out, was the answer. Continue to advocate, to work toward redoing current legislation and attitudes, as difficult as it might be, and learn to strengthen yourself within for the inevitable negative responses that will occur, surrounding yourself with those who are sympathetic. For ultimately, the best way to develop a safe place is to develop confidence in yourself, a knowledge of your legal and social situations, and foremost, the realization that no one has the right to harm you or anyone else, physically and emotionally, that the aggressors are to blame, not you. And what of the aggressors themselves? Again, facilities can be more careful who they hire and pay more attention to those who are on the job, in administrative as well as staff positions. There was a very interesting article in The Economist last year entitled "Going Off the Rails," describing how companies need to keep their eyes on their bosses for signs of destructive behavior. One knowledgeable executive developed his own self-control system by keeping a portrait of General Custer in his office as a reminder of his mortality. A recent article on mental health in The Panograph mentioned training programs offered in our areas by the McLean County Center for Human Services, for example. Chestnut Systems is another organization where companies can send their employees to be retrained. Penalties for transgressors could also be more severe, withholding pay and pensions, dismissal, or legal, legal action, for intimidation, for example, which typically does not involve physical action, is listed as a felony in the Illinois Criminal Code. A more obvious answer would be to make the hiring procedures more rigorous through intensive testing. The Merchants Integrity Test, for example, includes hostility, violence, and bullying in its evaluation programs.
Patricia, I'm afraid I'm going to have to ask you, Patricia, to wrap up. You ran out of time about 20 minutes, 20 seconds ago.
I can do it. Such methods could identify prospective employees with potential problems and safeguard companies' reputations before difficult situations turn into impossible ones. This is a tremendous responsibility, but we are capable of meeting it because we must. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Patricia. Thank you. Now, moving right along, we go on to our consent agenda on item six. Is there a, a motion to present the, approve the consent agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
Uh, moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. Okay.
I would like to pull item L.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Actually, I did that in the reverse order.
That's what I thought, Mayor. I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay. If the maker and the seconder of the motion would agree that we would minus item L, did you have another one? I'm sorry.
I would like to at least comment about six I. So is that a poll to comment?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure. So again, the maker and the seconder of the motion, I apologize.
Yes, yes.
I would, would accept that. So we're as presented except for item I and item L. Okay?
And Mayor, with regard to the consent agenda, I have not received any monies or financial benefits from any of the individuals or organizations referenced in these specific agenda items. Thank you.
Okay. And if we'll go ahead and vote then? And a I, of course, is approval of everything except for I and L. The motion carries eight to zero. Madam, there are no nays to announce. Okay. Moving right along then to item I. Alderwoman Sterns, you had some questions about Alderwoman.
Right, thank you. Based on a phone call I received today and some concerns about this, I, excuse me, just want to clarify, and I think David Hale's, I think Mr. Hale's, you're probably the expert on this. If I'm understanding correctly, there, there was never an agreement that the developer would build the underpass. Is that correct, or is it just a dispute that we've decided to resolve this way?
Let me ask Jeff Juergens to come up.
Okay, thank you.
And I could paraphrase, but we've talked, and he's looked over all the agreements on this matter, and do you want to answer that?
Yeah, to answer your question, we were not able to find any specific requirement. In, in contrast, there are on the documents, specific places where they do have to create underpasses for other parts of the development, but this specific street, there was not that same requirement.
So if I understand you correctly, we couldn't really find it in writing, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. And the other, I, forgive me, I'm not as familiar with the other underpass situations. Are they, are they building those?
I think it's already, it's already been constructed.
The other one probably would be on Black Oaks Boulevard. That is a street right adjacent to Benjamin Elementary School. That one was built, and it was very specifically laid out. Who was going to share in the cost, and the city and the developer did share in the cost.
Okay.
But that is not the case with this other one.
And the, one of the, one of the concerns that I heard was if the underpass is not built, and maybe, maybe it's the one that you're talking about, you know, I mean, there's, it's not my ward, I'm not as familiar as I could be, that it would create quite a trap, a difficulty in crossing, what is it, Kickaboo Creek? Is that the road? It would create a great difficulty in crossing that road, and eventually, the city would have to perhaps put in a stoplight. I mean, I just, does that make sense?
I don't, I don't agree with that, because keep in mind, the, the so-called trail is a nature trail. It's down below the grade of the streets on either side and the homes on either side. Most students who are going to go to Benjamin Elementary School are going to exit the home, go out on the street, take the sidewalk down to Kickaboo Creek Boulevard, and continue east. Ultimately, they can intersect with and get on a trail that takes them around the so-called Kickaboo Creek, you know, natural area. So they can access that either way, but I, I think there is this kind of mistaken belief that some of the children would go down into the goalie and then use the goalie as their main access way, you know, over towards Kickaboo Creek. I, I've lived in areas where you have those natural goalies, and I think predominantly you see children using more the streets that are in front of all the homes, not necessarily down in these nature trails. At least that's been my.
So the one underpass was built, and this one was never agreed to formally? Okay. Is that it? All right, thank you very much.
And I would just add to the city manager's comments. We did talk to the engineering staff about whether a stop sign or any other type of traffic control device would be warranted at this location, and they said no, they couldn't even justify a stop sign, is my recollection, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And just to say that, at least in all of my conversations with the developers and planners and staff and whatever, there was never any assumption at all that, that at any point that the city of Bloomington would have to cough this up. Thank you. Anything else? All right. Is there a motion to approve this item I? Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's not.
You were.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm.
Okay.
I'll move.
Okay. Moved by Alderwoman Sterns. Is there a second? Second. Second by Alderman Lauer. All right. And since we pulled this, we'll just go ahead and vote on this, please. Excuse me. I'm sorry, I pressed the wrong, would you please vote again? I apologize.
So where are we with this?
You, you vote again. I, if you're a favor. It's off?
Yeah.
Oh, geez. I don't know what I did this time. It's right, it's okay now? Okay.
We're having all kinds of technological difficulties.
Okay. And Alderwoman. Alderwoman Howman. If you want to vote on this, an I, we're waiting for your vote.
She had an iPad that went rogue.
Right, right. Okay. Okay, the motion carries eight to zero, and there are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Now, we're going to move right along to item L, and I believe it was Alderman Lauer who pulled that?
Yes, sir. And thank you. It came to my attention, I'm not the most informed in terms of the electronic communication and all that this entails with this agreement and the, and the licensure, but I do have several constituents that got to me finally late last evening, and I also became aware that several other municipalities, as well as the state of Massachusetts, and, and one of those is New York City, New York, have saved millions of dollars. Now, certainly, we don't have the volume in our agreement that they would have. I'm sure it's a much smaller amount. We're only talking about less than 150,000 here. However, every dime counts here. But some of the ancillary issues that come up is that increased, increased competition for many of the city contracts, business that the city does may be better available to our local businesses and others. And we have had, even on this agenda, we've had a number of items that we've either had to rebid, or we only have one company that might even be interested in, in one of the contracts. And so that kind of piqued my interest a little bit. I'm wondering if we couldn't table this and, and look for more information, and one of the sources that I was exposed to is solidoffice.com, and if you want to look further, slash openoffice slash New York City or NYC. It was one of the big examples.
Mr. Sprouse, are there, if you could tell us what the situation is with respect to this contract?
Yeah, the, what we're asking for from council, council is to renew a, kind of a longstanding agreement for Microsoft products. Alderman Lauer, that's what you're speaking of, is alternatives to Microsoft, you know, the Windows operating system and Microsoft Office. That's what openoffice and, and solidoffice are. We definitely are aware of those applications. You know, our staff research has told us that, yes, they, you know, they can work, certainly in, in certain circumstances. You know, it's, it's not really a typical, you know, agency of our size and, you know, enterprise solutions, you know, they don't necessarily go that route. There are, in fact, a, a few instances where some of those certain agencies that have gone open source like that have kind of come back, you know, to a Microsoft solution. And honestly, it, for us, not that we don't look into those things, but, but we do feel that, you know, with the amount of resources that we have available to us, you know, this is, you know, kind of the, the most, the, the most cost-effective way to go, even, even though, you know, it may or may not be a little bit more expensive than some of those other solutions. It's a, it's a resource thing a lot of times, and we look at what are the talents on our staff, you know, what, what compatibilities do we need to make sure that we, you know, maintain with other organizations and other agencies, that sort of thing. that sort of thing, so that's why we're coming.
You're, you're telling me that staff time and, and effort, retraining, and all those issues may cost us additional funding, um, that, that may not be?
We don't have the expertise for some of those other solutions, uh, you know, especially, you know, from an operating system standpoint, and, and also from a, from a productivity suite standpoint, you know, we, we, uh, you know, we do have staff, uh, expertise, you know, with this environment, which is, which is one of the reasons why, you know, we, we are recommending that we continue down this road. Certainly don't ever, um, you know, eliminate, uh, looking at some of those other solutions, we always do that. In fact, we do have some backend solutions that are running on some of the openoffice, uh, uh, operating systems. You know, we have different servers and, um, appliances that, you know, that do some of those things in the background for us that are running on those OSSs, but from a, from a citywide perspective, it's, it's a little daunting, to say the least.
Okay, thank you, okay. Right? Are there any other questions? Um, could we have a, a motion, actually, I should have had that, a motion to approve before we went down that path?
Motion approved.
By Alderman Lauer, is there a second? Second by Alderwoman Howman, uh, please go ahead and vote. Okay. The, uh, motion carries eight to zero, thank you. And now we move to item seven A, a cooperative agreement for constructed wetland near Lake Bloomington, and staff recommendations the authorization be granted. Mr. Hales, you want to add any preparatory remarks before I ask for a motion?
Very briefly, uh, uh, we just have a brief presentation before we'd recommend you vote on this. Uh, the presentation will be provided by Rick Twight, he's the, the manager at our, uh, wa, or our water treatment plant. Uh, we thought it would be helpful to help you, help the council and the public understand that working in cooperation with the Nature Conservancy and many other entities, we're continuing to try and look for ways, not only our municipality, but most everyone else that derives their, part of their public water, uh, drinking supply from rivers and streams, how we can keep as much of the nitrates and other farmland fertilizers out of that public water to avoid some very large future costs in water treatment. So I've asked, uh, Rick, just to take a few minutes, uh, to give a quick overview of this project, and what some of those future costs could be, if we're not successful in keeping the amount of nitrates, you know, below federal standards. Mr. Twight?
Honorable Mayor and Council, Mr. Hales and Ms. Gover, thanks so much for the opportunity to make this request to you this evening. What we are, uh, requesting is that we get permission to enter into an agreement with the Nature Conservancy to install a constructed wetland on city property for treating, uh, agricultural tile drainage specifically for nitrates. And we've had some problems with nitrates in the past, it's always a concern with us as a water supply, as a surface water supply. Nitrates are a regulated compound, they come from, uh, fertilizer, and they're extremely difficult to remove. We can't just filter them out, like we can with some sediment and things like, uh, bacteria, things like that in the water plant. We have to remove them, if we do it at the plant, we would have to have a specific type of treatment process called ion exchange, there's some others too, but for us, the most practical would be, uh, building a fairly large treatment facility to remove this. And our approach, which has been this way since the early nineteen nineties with our Source Water Protection Program, is to try and address these, uh, the, these problems at their source, where we're looking at, uh, a various suite of, of possible solutions. And one of them is actually using, uh, constructed wetlands to treat this, this water. The nitrates go into the wetland, bacteria, uh, take that, and they convert that nitrate into nitrogen gas, which is, uh, inert and not a problem for us. And, uh, it, it's fairly exciting that, the work that we have been doing, especially with our partners, with the Nature Conservancy, Environmental Defense Fund, of course, that are stalwart allies, the Soil Water Conservation District from McLean County, and many, many others. Oops. Sorry about that. But this is part of, uh, a, a project that we have, it's called the Mackinac Drinking Water Shed Project, where it is, uh, a cooperative agreement with, uh, the, the city, Nature Conservancy, Environmental Defense Fund, where we're actually trying to work with the landowners in the drainage basins for both of these reservoirs in order to find ways to diminish the amount of nitrates that are actually entering in to our reservoirs. We're trying to take this at the source. So much of this land is in private operation and ownership, so we really have to work on a cooperative, uh, way with these folks. And one of the things that really helps that out is actually have some demonstration sites for the landowners to see how it would look like on their property, and this is exactly what we're trying to do here. For this particular project, the Coca-Cola Company, as part of their Global Sustainability Initiative, has provided some funding to the Nature Conservancy in order to build one of these demonstration wetlands, and this is what we're talking about tonight. I will learn how to use one of these, one of these years, and, and this is, uh, an aerial view showing the, uh, general area site that we're looking at. These are privately owned fields, this is actually a tile research, uh, site, we're working with a private landowner for nitrogen, uh, application research. These are a couple of constructed wetlands that take surface water, as well as the tile drainage that we build. This is city property, and this is city property as well, and this is the site where we want to, uh, build this constructed wetland. One of the advantages of the, the type of wetland we want to put in now is that it's going to accept only this agricultural tile drainage, which is the way it's removing, um, excess moisture from these fields, and going in, and, and we're bypassing the surface flow so we can change the size of, uh, minimize the size of it. This is an aerial photo, uh, what we're trying to do is to hook up these tile drainage lines, which you can see here, it, it's kind of a tough thing to do, to locate these things, and route this outlet here, along with these guys down here, and to build a wetland at that point. And the work that we've done before, the work that Nature Conservancy has done before, shows these are, you know, fairly efficient at removing with, with no real inputs, other than just the, the land itself. And, uh, we have, uh, reason to believe this could be a success if we keep up with it, be persistent with this. But for this particular project, uh, Coca-Cola, uh, Company will provide the funds for the wetland engineering and construction. The Nature Conservancy will provide staff and monitoring equipment, we're going to measure the flows and the water quality, what's going into these and what's going out, so we can kind of document what that's going to be. And we're going to allow access for people, uh, to view it. We're going to do a little bit of mowing, and there's a, a private lane where we want to get the construction equipment over, that we'll probably have to touch up a little bit with some gravel, and, uh, that's pretty much the extent of what we're looking at here. And this is what they look like, once they're, once they're done. This is actually at Comlar Park, this is, uh, on city property where we have a demonstration site there that we put in on our dime, and, uh, this is the outlet of it. But they're really wonderful amenities for wildlife habitat, and, and they work, they work twenty-four hours a day, which is, uh, really nice and exciting.
And Rick, would you just kind of share with them, I, I know last year, we were even considering maybe the necessity of bringing in a portable treatment facility to try and remove nitrates. What kind of costs could we face someday if we have to actually add to the plant to remove nitrates?
Right. Now, if we were to, uh, put in fixed ion exchange for the entire, uh, need, uh, you know, for nitrate removal, it would be, um, in excess of five or six million dollars, uh, easily. Uh, one thing we're looking at, though, we, we aren't trying to, uh, totally take that out of the running, what we want to try and do is minimize that amount, we were still looking at this small, smaller unit to just kind of take the edge off, sort of like a fire extinguisher, rather than building an entire firehouse for this, and we'll rely on the rest. And we're, we're looking at about a million dollars for just a little one MGD, uh, unit. Plus, we have the ancillary, uh, waste disposal issues, because it's, uh, like a industrial-sized water softener, where you have to take some strong brine solution, saltwater solution to flush that out when, when the unit gets filled up with nitrates, you've got to get rid of that stuff. We don't have, uh, uh, sewage facilities at Lake Bloomington, so that really poses a major issue for us, we'll have to truck it. One of the best things about this is we are blessed to have two reservoirs. Uh, Evergreen Lake is a much larger one, and most years, actually, all years since, you know, nineteen nineties, we've been able to avoid being over that nitrate limit by careful management of our reservoirs, where we save as much water as we can, low-nitrate water coming into the fall in Evergreen, and then have that dilute this high-nitrate water coming in from the streams. When you have a major, major drought, all bets are off, and that's where we wanted to look for this, this fixed, uh, nitrate removal at the plant, but also, hopefully, if we get going on this, we're relying a lot on, um, agricultural program support as well for some of the construction, that's, uh, that's what we're hoping for.
Okay. We are technically out of time, but, uh, people have questions, and we haven't, we haven't debated a motion.
Sorry, I ramble.
No, 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 you, that's fine, very, very, uh, you know, informative, thank you. I'm looking for a motion, yes.
I, um, I would like to make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Howman, uh, any further discussion or questions of Mr. Twight?
I actually have a, a, a brief, I'm sorry, go ahead, Judy.
Okay. Alderwoman Sterns, and then Schmidt.
Rick, just a, just a general question, how many acre, I mean, is this even a, I, I don't know if you can even give a number, how many acres do we really consider watershed?
Uh, it's four to three thousand acres in the Lake Bloomington watershed, and about twenty-six thousand in the Evergreen Lake.
Wow. And, and are we looking at all of that, all of that watershed in terms of getting this compliance and getting this? Or are we limiting it to, you know, you might say there, I'm sure there's, our degrees?
Right.
So, how does that work?
We're looking at, we, we actually want to get the whole watershed taken care of. Uh, as, as much as we can reduce by these methods, we, we want to, again, these wetlands, they're very, they're wonderful. They're, they're great for habitat and all that, but this is one tool in our toolbox. We have a lot of nutrient management work that we're doing, and also some other, uh, uh, ways it's got, resaturated of repairing buffer zones and, and things, so we, we're trying to get a whole suite of these tools put in.
Alderwoman Schmidt?
Um, I had the opportunity to see these early on, the test beds, and, um, I think you're being very modest at the level of excitement and interest that I think we're attracting nationally to what we're doing.
It's going over well.
Which is very cutting-edge, and I think it's, um, really helping a lot of communities understand how to manage their water better in a much more safe and inexpensive way, and congratulations on moving it along like this.
Thank you, we've got a fantastic team working on this, thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Can I?
All right, can we go ahead, oh, I'm sorry, did you have a comment, question?
Quick comment, thank you so much, because you're looking to the future, um, we're being proactive rather than reactive, and this is one of those public-private things that I just really, really like, it helps us all out, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, we'll go ahead and vote, um, yes is, of course, in favor of this. Okay. What's this? Oh, okay, it's not showing. Ah!
Oh, sorry.
Oh, there it is, okay. We got it, we bad, all right. It's, uh, eight I's and no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, motion carries, thank you, Rick, very much appreciate it. All right. Now, moving right along, we move to item seven B, and it's, uh, analysis of rebid at Evergreen Lake Spillway Bridge Superstructure Replacement. And actually, let's go ahead here and, and begin to back, get back to our protocol, is there, is there a motion to approve and a second before we go forward? Um, moved by Alderwoman Howman, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt, okay. Uh, questions, concerns, comments? Uh, Mr. Hales, you want to?
Only, we, we have staff here, I, I thought Greg Calavich did a great job giving background information on what's happened, because this is the second time you've seen this, so certainly, if you had any other questions, we have Greg in the audience that can help respond to those, but I thought he took a, he did a great job with his background memo.
Okay. Questions?
Just a comment, I have been out, um, I'm very familiar with the area, as I've, uh, been exposed to it for much of my life, um, actually was out there and spent a lot of time as a voice scout before the park was even, uh, developed. Um, I've been out there recently and looked at the damage, um, uh, to the column, and I have concerns that, uh, we may be looking at additional, um, issues later on down the road. And so, once we get into the, uh, the repair, it's going to be very interesting to see, um, what everyone thinks from a professional level in terms of the construction, whether we need to repair additional columns as well. So, there may be more expense down the road, and I'm, it's a little scary at times, I guess, so.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Anything else, then, uh, if we can go ahead and vote? Okay, uh, the motion carries eight to zero, no nays to announce, Madam Clerk, thank you. Now, moving right along to item C, and that's our Streets Master Plan Update, and we have a presentation, and, uh, come on forward, Mr. Hales, do you have any preparatory comments here?
Very briefly, uh, we do have with us tonight Kurt, uh, and it.
Fido Breisky.
Yeah. I didn't practice that beforehand.
That's all right, thank you.
And others from Hanson Engineering, you may recall, um, you approved a contract with Hanson to help prepare a Streets Master Plan. Uh, Kurt is going to give not only an update on that project, but a very significant part of that is to, with the council's help and approval, to select a certain number of projects to actually run through, uh, the methodology, uh, that they are going to be using, that, uh, and that's one of the reasons we wanted Hanson, uh, among other things, is to help us establish a very objective and a very, uh, ongoing robust methodology to, in the future, determine, uh, at least ranking priorities of certain projects, at least at the staff level, uh, and then when they get to the council level, you can take that under advisement as you make any final decisions on any future street projects. So with that, I'd like to turn to Kurt, to begin his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hales, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, City Council, for letting us come and talk about our project. This is really where we kick off our project tonight, um, associate of mine, Becca Wagner, uh, she went along and handed out, uh, updated presentation and some, uh, individual project sheets that you guys can be able to use later, we'll discuss that, but the, the presentation really changed the order a little bit after talking with staff and refining some things, uh, on, on Friday, after the packet came out, and then again on Friday, or on Monday this morning, so we wanted to make sure that you had it, and you can take some notes as we go, but the content's generally the same, just a little bit additional information. So, um, the first thing, as Mr. Hales said, um, that we want to do tonight, just give you an overview, is to kind of go through our process, uh, talk about how we want to involve the council and involve the public, and then, um, go through the metrics and things, so the first, the first part of that is project selection, and, uh, it really starts with stakeholder in, input, um, and by that, I'd mean, in, in general, the public work staff and Mr. Hales, and then the council and the general public. Uh, we already had, we had a kickoff meeting, um, in addition to, with the public work staff and Mr. Hales, where we kind of lined out some of this information on the metrics and the projects, and, and, uh, what potential projects could be, and basically, essentially, what they did is turned us over to the capital plan, um, other surface transportation plans and whatnot, to identify a list of projects, and there's about twenty-two that I think are in the packet there, um, and, and the information that, that we've identified, but that by no means is the final list, um, that's why we're here tonight, uh, is to give you guys a heads up of where we're going, and to get your input, um, at a, basically through, uh, future correspondence, so then we can get an approval, uh, from, from this body as to what those, or what we're going to have here, uh, to, to identify and to work with. Um, we have, we basically have scoped twenty-five projects, so the twenty, like I said, we, we can actually delete from the ones that we've already listed, or, or add, and add to that however we'd like. Um, once we get that information from, um, from you guys, uh, on probably mid-November as to what projects you've identified in addition, we'll actually take this information to the public and see if there's anything else, we'll have a public meeting kind of similar to this, and let them kind of add back in there, just to, to build the consensus and the. there just to, to build the consensus in the community over what's going on. So then, once we have those projects, those 25 projects, we want to create, as Mr. Hales said, some really objective, data-driven type metrics so we can ident, so we can create benefit-cost analysis to, to basically prioritize across the cross-section of projects. So, everything's kind of on a standard footing. That starts with adverse tre, or with safety, with public, public safety and crashes and things like that on the surface transportation system, it all comes at a cost. Those crashes, you know, have a cost to the economy, and there's costs to the improvements that reduce those. So what we'll do is, once we get the projects identified, we'll go through and have, and use the Highway Safety Manual and those type of procedures to figure out what the actual crash modifications are for each one of these projects, and over the, over the lifecycle of a, of a project, be able to reduce, or be able to show what the benefit to the general public and to the traveling public is of that, of said improvement. The next one's adverse travel. Basically, we take into account anything from a small intersection improvement all the way up to new alignments on roadways to the transportation system. One of the goals here is to look at a 20-year transportation plan, figure out just what, where future funds need to be prioritized objectively, and adverse travel comes into play because if you want to have, add a traffic signal to a corridor, or even a new, build a new alignment, or a new interchange, or whatever the size of that improvement is, there has to be some sort of benefit to the system. So we can look at the city of Bloomington as a whole and travel demand model software and be able to show what the actual amount of travel is from one throughout the network and, and on any given day. And so what we'll do is take that out over the lifecycle. Next, on, on that side, we actually have lifecycle costs. So, in those lifecycle costs, you know, that starts with construction. It starts when, and when we have different types of projects, they have different spans. So, for instance, we have a bridge, when it was, when a bridge is designed, in today's standards, we would expect it to last 75 years, whereas a roadway would last, you know, 30, depending on the levels of maintenance, could last anywhere from 20 to 40 years. So we have to have some way to kind of put those all in the same lifecycle so that we, and what we do is pick a 50-year lifecycle and start from there and go through, and go through that, that direction. That's the, that's the denominator in our benefit-cost ratio. That actually takes into account things like engineering services, if that's done in-house or not, it takes into account maintenance over time, what level of maintenance provided from overlay system or from other surface treatments or geotechnical things that come up during a project. We'll have estimations to those types of issues that come up. Last, the last part of that is, we, once we get out of the metrics, we want to go more, the more data-driven metrics, we want to go and take a look at other plans that have been done across the system and coordinate the street plans, because you don't want to go back in and, and, you know, tear up a street or something multiple times. So what we'll do is, we'll coordinate with the underground infrastructure improvements that could come up, sewer, sanitary sewer, water mains, those kinds of issues, those kinds of infrastructure, just to make sure, to see when, you know, it's on the horizon for the projects that are identified. And lastly, what we, what we would do is ask for your input. Again, we'd basically come and present, present our findings and ask for your input on things, and then take, and the, the part that would go to the public is, once we have those projects identified, we do a survey. That survey would send out to, in, in the water bill, I believe, the city is, they've been enough, kind enough to offer that service for us, to go out in the water bill, it'd come back and have the general public basically rank the 25 projects that we come up with to see what's important to them and, and see if there's actually any other things that come out of that they let us know they didn't do through other parts of the process. So, back to the project selection, that kind of goes through the metrics of the project, but back to the project selection, what we did is, we took the information from those capital improvement plans and actually the database of, that the city, the city staff provided us, and looked at things like pavement conditions, looked at ADT or average daily traffic, and designed our volumes, and tried to figure out if there's any cross-sectional changes needed, so that would be widening or road dieting or bike lanes and those kinds of things. And then we looked at new alignments, and those are just system improvements. Comes from the, do, do I need, like I said earlier, do I need a new interchange at maybe, I think identified as Oakland Avenue for potential, or do I need a new arterial street, whether that's the connection or the extension of Hershey or Mitsubishi Motorway in the future, however that ends up working out. So, these 22 projects were in a plan, in plans provided to us by staff, whether they're five-year or 20-year or even through the MPO, and the, so what we're here today then is to, to go through and see, let you know where we're at, and go through those projects real quickly, and then get your input, and then, lastly, we'll go through a schedule of trying to incorporate you, your input into the plan. First, like, I've kind of alluded to a lot of these, so I won't spend a lot of time, but these are the types of projects that we're looking at, again, overlaying, surface treatments, crack filling, those kinds of just standard maintenance-type projects, and we'll do, we'll add all of that into the benefit-cost ratios, and then reconstruction, you would remove and replace a street, do we need to road out or dry it or widen, can we add a traffic signal, and then any bridge projects that city staff's provided to us. So here's the first list of projects, it's kind of cluttered. What you have in your packet is actually, there, there's an individual sheet for each one of the projects, so you can kind of see it on its own, but here's, here's what we have. They're pretty self-explanatory, or self-explanatory, you know, we have GE Road, it's a traffic signal at Keaton Place, Emerson Street, widening and reconstruction from, from Linden to Tawanda, traffic signal Hershey, a couple of traffic signals along Hershey, Emerson Street or Seminary Avenue, widening or reconstruction from Cottage to Center, and then College Avenue, maintenance, reconstruction, those kinds of things. Next is, south of Illinois 9 and east of 150, this is where kind of some of the new alignments start to play in somewhat. We have, for new, on the new alignment side, we have Hamilton Road, extending it from its current terminus to the east, to, to Tawanda Barnes. We do have the legs, I think that's of Abraham Road, it's currently a township road that we need to be realigned as a part of that, and then the Hershey Road Extension, you can see part of the Mitsubishi Motorway Extension that was in some long-range plans comes up on the bottom side here. The, the current, and then the Hamilton Road West Extensions here as well. Some of the reconstruction, more maintenance-type projects are Oakland Avenue from Hershey down around to Island Grove, and Lafayette Reconstruction Center to Ash, and Bunce Street, reconstruction from Lafayette to Woodrig. The last slide we have here, again, it's kind of a mix, but does have some of the new alignments, and some of these were taken in lieu of some other ones that have been suggested, for instance, like Wiley Drive Extension, it's a new alignment, there's been some debate as to Wiley Drive or J.C. Parkway, those kinds of things, so, but we have basically J.C., or Wiley Drive listed here and would take input if someone would like to see a different improvement. The Mitsubishi Motorway, both of its extensions are on this side, both the one that we saw as it continues on the south end of the, of the, of the area, and then up to north of Illinois 9, I believe that is, or south, just south Illinois 9, I'm sorry. And then Oakland Avenue Interchange I alluded to, Oakland Avenue actually has two projects on here, there's Oakland Avenue, the interchange with a new, slight new alignment, but then also Oakland Avenue and Six Points Road for widening and reconstruction. Fox Creek Road, maintenance and reconstruction from Danbury to Bike, and that kind of ties in with Fox Creek Road Bridge reconstruction over the Union Pacific currently. The Lutz Road Project reconstruction is in here, from Morris to the Luther Oaks Facility, in addition to a new alignment of Martin Luther King Drive to the south down to Six Points Road. The Brown to Euclid is kind of the alternative to that that's being considered, and it was, realignment was in here, so that, that's listed, as well as a Washington Street widening and reconstruction from Euclid to Morris. A lot of the widening and reconstruction-type projects and maintenance projects were based a lot on the pavement condition data that was provided to us by the city staff, just where the, the ratings were low or on their way to becoming low so that we could get them in here, so you could see the benefits of maintenance practices or reconstruction, one versus the other. That's, that takes us through to the schedule. The first, like I said, is the council members, we would like to ask the council members to provide us projects lists or any deletions that you would have, that you would request, hopefully by November, by November 10th. At that point, what we'll do is, we'll, we'll kind of collate those and get all that data together separately, and we'll basically have this kind of same quick public meeting and go through this kind of information and, and ask for feedback from, from the general public. The next part of that is then to come back with, to you, to this body with a list of 25 projects, where we would ask for your approval at that time of those 25, because there's a lot of data that needs to be, that needs, you know, we need to go through and those things, we don't want to have any wasted effort on, on that side. So we'll do that sometime in, at one of your December meetings. And then lastly, depending on how some of the information comes together, we expect to be presenting results to, to you again and potentially to anyone else that would, would be interested in the spring or early summer of 2015. So with that, that's kind of where we sit, but this is basically our kickoff to begin talking about which projects we want to do to try to get you guys a 20-year capital plan that is based in objective performance measures, and that just isn't the condition of your pavement as well, to kind of show the importance of different projects.
Mayor, if I could, let me just have Kurt mention one thing, one project that's not in here, and I, I think I know the answer, is the Hamilton-Bunne Commerce, because the council approved us trying to go out and seek a Tiger grant, but also that, that same Hamilton-Bunne Commerce was in that major study you did a few years ago, where I think you went through a very similar, used some very similar metrics to identify that is...
We did, and I apologize if you missed that, David, but it's, I, I probably skipped it. It's actually on the slide that's up here, I believe it's the second one maybe, through there, but yeah, it is, and those metrics are similar, as we used previously, and the metrics are actually similar to a lot of how Tiger grant application is put together. We look, need to put together that benefit-cost ratio for a Tiger grant, so these, these things are based in those kinds of, of applications and theories that people look at, and one thing that I would add additionally is that the, the information that we would provide could be done, could be used for that, such, such an application, or even for city staff, for public work staff to go and try to pursue highway safety improvement funds for a certain project, because they would have a benefit-cost ratio of that project that's required that would relate directly to that, to whichever project they'd want to pursue. So it's kind of, we kind of hit it all around from a funding perspective so that it can be broken into pieces and different funding can be tried, be basically worked towards by, by staff.
Alderman Faes.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for your presentation. Two or three maybe more general questions. I want to go back to something that you said. You were talking about, I think, the useful life expectancy for different types of structures, and I think you mentioned 35, 30-year for a road, 75 for a bridge. Then you mentioned 50-year, and is, what, what was the significance of the 50-year?
So what we have to do is put everything on a, on a foot, on a, on the same footing. We have to compare apples to apples, essentially. So a road, depending on the level of maintenance that you would have, that you would be completing on it, could last anywhere from 20 to 40 years, generally speaking, and a bridge would last, would last 75 years.
So you weren't suggesting you would aggregate both of those into just a 50-year?
No, no. What we do is, we go back and we salvage.
I'm good.
Using standard engineering economics.
You're talking about developing kind of a unit cost measure, if you would, based on, on useful life expectancy.
Basically.
Gotcha, I'm tracking with you. The, the prioritization that you mentioned for the, the 25 projects, that I think, again, if I understood the, the process that you outlined, was you'd be looking for some feedback from the council on, on those.
Yes.
Will we have any, will we have any data points, will we have any base metrics, will we have anything associated, anything that's more quantitative in nature around some of the aspects that you mentioned, and I'm, and I'm trying to find, go back up here and find it, like, things around safety, adverse travel, those types of things.
You know, at this point, we're working from a clean slate, to be honest. We don't want the data to influence what projects that you're talking about, because we have so many that we've already identified. So what we'd like to do is, is get your feedback, being users of the system, having constituents that use the system on a daily basis, we believe that you probably hear about certain things that, that maybe we haven't, or even that get filtered even, maybe not even to Mr. Hales or staff. So our, our goal here is to basically try to vet all the projects that, all the worthy projects that, that come in, and then we can put them together and, and come back for your approval. So that, that's kind of where we'd like to start.
And, and maybe I didn't ask the question the, the right way. Let's just assume for the sake of discussion that, that the final list we would be looking at are the 25 that you proposed here. I understand that you're saying something may slide out and something else may slide in, but for the sake of conversation, if, if the 25 that, that you have here in your draft are the final ones, then you would ask us to, to just kind of prioritize those based on?
No, I would not. I just want to basically have consensus from, from the council that these are the, basically the 25 projects that we want to study.
Gotcha, so you're just looking for the big picture, what's, what's inside?
Exactly.
Thank you.
And then we'll do all the data crunching, and, and we'll, we'll take care of all that, and then get basically a benefit-cost ratio for, for you guys to review and, and basically ask us questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, Alderman Schmidt, and then Fruehmann and Lawler.
Thank you. Just a request, actually, could we have this pulled out of our council packet along with the individual street-level details that are in our packet and put separately on a link? I'm, I'm just thinking about...
On our website?
Yeah, just to be able to push this out so that we're, we're continuing to get citizen input on this, and before November the 10th. Thank you.
Excellent idea. Alderman Fruehmann?
So, my question is, whether it's Tiger grants or other funding, do we know upfront which projects are more likely to receive funding, some contribution from other agencies?
You, you'll have a, an idea, because what I'll say is that when we do the benefit-cost ratios, that, that's a, that's a metric now as data becomes more and more available to, to engineers and planners. Basically, that benefit-cost ratio has to be over one for something to get funded likely, and it would have to be, depending on what type of improvement even maybe substantially, what type of funding you're looking for substantially over one. So, at, given the atmosphere at the time that you would be pursuing that funding, you would have an idea as to whether or not the project would be basically a good one to have a chance to, to obtain highway safety improvement funds or Tiger grant or other, or an ITEP grant, or, and whatever those may be. So that would probably, it would have to be taken into account in the context of when you applied for those, for that funding and that type of funding.
Next, Alderman Lawler, and then Alderwoman Sterns.
Okay, real quick, I would hope that we would be able to have some general traffic counts, if you've already got those, and those could be made available to the public as well. Okay.
Yep, that's not a problem, we can do that. And we, we can even provide the pavement conditions that we use to help...
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be great.
Okay. Alderman Sterns?
Interested in the survey that you're planning with the, with the, going out with the phone bills, is that right?
Yes, or water bills.
What, that's what I meant, water bills. I misspoke. And would those be in every water bill?
Yeah, that's the plan, I believe, at this point.
Every water bill?
Mm-hmm.
And how, what kind of a response do you, what kind of a return rate do you expect?
Um, you know, I think on some of the previous ones, I think city staff told us that they had maybe anywhere from three to 800 or so, and that would probably be a pretty good response, to be quite honest, I mean, for, for us to consider what, what input we get back.
So obviously you'll be analyzing that data and giving it back to us, is that right?
Yep.
Yes. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Hales?
Just a couple of quick ques, or comments. One, I, you know, as we have also specifically asked Hanson to look, going back through some of the maintenance areas, some of you have probably observed, one of the maintenance techniques or tools we do not use in Bloomington is crack filling. I don't, many cities use that, but we thought, as, as Kurt will be looking at this together with our staff, we just feel that this would be a good opportunity to look at the pros and cons and bring that to the council, because, and see what the recommendation is. Is that something that we should consider in the future? It does come with a cost, and, and sometimes you can have conflicting opinions as to value of that, but I know just in the five years I've been here, a lot of people will ask, you know, why don't we do that, or would that provide some additional benefit for longevity of the road? So, that is something he's looking at, and then I think the other point is, in one of the Aldermanic subcommittees, I think it was a year or two ago, we brought to them the so-called McLean County Long-Term Transportation Plan. This is a document that has many of these roads out there. We haven't probably, as a staff, done as good a job making sure that you, the council, sees any of those changes we might recommend over the years. As a case in point, recently, we were dealing with, well, let's take, take J.C. Parkway. Some of you may remember the ICW agreement, and back when Walmart was coming in, the supposed alignment was going to be the extension of J.C. Parkway. How, and, you know, there was some considerable expense went into designing that road right-of-way and some of those plans. However, as engineers change and as we continue to look at past plans, there is some recommendations now that we ought to reconsider that and maybe move that to the Wiley Drive Extension. But again, we, we've asked Kurt to look at that, because this is a way, just with updated information, with... that because this is a way, just with updated information, with everyone, you know, our current staff and with Hanson, we want to bring back to you, should there be a change? So at some point in the future, should the council weigh in and actually adopt, you know, some specific alignment if it is different from JC Parkway. Um, and, and lastly, I, I did ask Jim to put in the memo, and hopefully you read, there is opportunities, uh, you know, every year to, to recommend what should be on our five-year, uh, traffic, what is implement, uh, traffic tip? Yeah, yeah. And, and while there has been some, um, um, you know, past practices associated with that, but we want to make showing going forward that we can really get the council engaged and help us look at, you know, are, are there some additional priority of streets? Even though they may be five, 10, 15 years down the road, need to be given more attention early on. And, and Alderman Lauer, I might mention Lafayette Street. You know, it's, it's over the last six years, I think we have struggled just to get and to keep up with what we have. What we're not doing as well right now, and again with your support of these master plans, is looking out 20 years and given the fact that some of these projects are going to come with a hu- very high price tag, but how can you help us in prioritizing those so that if we need to do a feasibility study, if we need to start, you know, doing some preliminary work on that, how do we begin that effort? Uh, just like we did a, a year or two ago with Lutz Road. So, uh, if nothing else, my final comment is we want to make sure we can help you take a very comprehensive, you know, looking at all these needs in totality and help us all better kind of prioritize, even starting early on, even though it may be a project that is going to have to borrow funds for, or maybe it'd be 10 years. But you need to be in the driver's seat of deciding those priorities. But we want to provide with Hanson's help, a very professional, very objective, a very, uh, understandable, you know, means by which we can at least at the staff level begin to prioritize those, uh, of many of these projects for your consideration. So I appreciate Hanson's being on board with us and Jim and the engineers and all those, and look forward to continuing on with this very important project.
Sure we do as well. Thank you very much, and thank you. All right. And almost exactly on time, moving forward to the, um, resolution communicating city of Bloomington priorities, issues and needs for the Illinois Department of Transportation. And that is item seven D. And there are several items on this. Before we, um, go for a discussion, again, is there a motion to approve and a second?
I'll make a motion that we approve as presented.
Okay. Uh, moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second? Seconded by Alderwoman Hauman. Okay. Now discussion. Who'd like to speak to this or address this? Okay. Well, that was quick. I guess all, uh, the city manager.
I, I keep it real brief. There was just a couple of minor changes and, and it just wanted to bring your attention. We did add US 51, this is Center Street, north of downtown. It wasn't on the, the earlier list, but if any of you driven that, you know that right after IDOT resurfaced that a couple of years ago, within a year it started falling apart. So we hope to get a little traction and see if I, IDOT can come back in and really do a much more permanent, uh, job in really resurfacing that. The first go-around did not work out very well.
Another quality project.
So, and Jim, was there any other change?
Per the direction of the city council, we also added the Hamilton Road Bund to Commerce Project. That was another one that was discussed. And in addition, we also added the traffic, the traffic, uh, uh, monitoring the traffic signals. We talked about intelligent traffic and signal design. So that also has been added.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, then if we can go ahead and vote? The motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. Okay. Now moving on to item E, uh, the proposed 2014 tax levy, city and library, and adoption of estimated levy. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and once again, um, ask for a, a motion to approve and a second, and then begin the discussion.
So moved.
Okay. Moved by Alderwoman Painter, seconded by Alderwoman Schmidt.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, discussion, comments. I think consistent with some of, just as a prefatory remarks, a couple of the people who spoke during public comment, our policy is unless there's something really unusual, we, we don't engage in a conversation. We did have people who were concerned about earmarking any money for perhaps pensions, and that's exactly what's done here, police fire pensions. And at the end of the day, depending on how things sift, uh, people's tax bill from the city of Bloomington will actually go down somewhere between a buck and a quarter, dollar 24, I think was one of the estimates. Is that right, Mr. Hales?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
And it obviously depends a little bit on the size of your home. Certainly, n- not a tax increase or tax decrease that we'd want to brag about, but it's, it's essentially close to flat, so.
And Mayor, if I could, just as you said, you know, uh, our recommendation tonight is that, uh, if this ultimately is approved on a final vote later in November, or first of December, that the entire half million dollar increase in the levy go exclusively to the police and fire pension. Uh, our finance director is working on some documents we'll share with you later, 'cause as you know, we've got about a $6 million increase in funding we have to meet over five years. We've made some great initial progress, but with this half million dollars, we'll be able to make sure in at least in the first two years and in some of the third, you know, we're, we're making progress in getting that. So, uh, that is specifically the recommendation. If this is approved, that, uh, the entire half million dollars go to the police and fire pensions as per the policy you adopted a year or two ago, uh, and what we're gonna work towards over the next five years.
And just, um, to clarify, this is also something that bond rating agencies would probably look favorable upon if we've got a dedicated revenue stream. And I see, uh, Patty Lynn Silva's nodding as well. Okay. Uh, Alderman Black, um, Alderman Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, um, I sent an email earlier today, and I had mentioned this last week when we had talked about, um, this topic. And I wanted to invite Patty Lynn up here. I see that we have some handouts, uh, at our, our station here. Uh, the question I had raised last week, and then again today via email, was, um, in regards to the taxes that we had raised last year, the motor fuel tax and the amusement tax, um, and what property tax would look like if we were to repeal those taxes and how our, our budget would be impacted by that decision. Um, so could you comment on some of the, the tables that you left us here?
Um, yes. Uh, what I did was I kind of gave you guys all a copy of the email that was given to Scott, and I wasn't, um, sure if we'd be discussing that tonight. So, um, I do have some copies that I will bring out for the public. Um, if you were to, uh, right now, the amusement tax and the local motor field tax were each adopted for about a million dollars. So it'd be about $2 million. But the local motor field tax is trending a little bit higher, as we mentioned before. So if you wanted to swap, um, those taxes, repeal those and replace them with the property tax, I estimate that you'd need about 2.2 million. And I did provide that estimate here, as, uh, Scott had asked. Uh, if you have a piece of paper that looks like this, um, and it's on the first sheet, and it's the first item in yellow, that would equate to about a $46 impact to the taxpayer, um, who has a home of about $153,000. Is that what you were looking for?
So really, the question that we could ask ourselves is, is, you know, someone who has a home of that size, it, would they be spending about, uh, the $46 or we'll say $47 in this scenario, um, towards the other taxes per year? And, and, hard, hard to say.
Yeah, these are all estimates. But, um, but if, if you were to take off the value of those two taxes you just passed and replace them with the property tax, this would be this year's impact.
Certainly. And, and the reason I bring this up is this is feedback that I've gotten from a lot of constituents who have wanted us to move towards this model as opposed to the model that we've done in the past with more of, of these specific taxes. And, and one thing I'll, I'll, I'll ask too, you, you mentioned that motor fuel tax is, is trending up. I've noticed that prices have gone down. Uh, how, does that impact it because people are buying more because their prices are less?
We get four cents a gallon no matter what, so, you know.
Right. Well, yeah. But it, it's interesting to, to think that.
I would think they probably would buy a mo- more, but right now we've only gotten two months of data. It went into effect August 1st. So, um, August was a big month, um, where we had over $200,000. Um, September's slightly lower. So we're waiting to see. We're excited and waiting to see.
Really? Well, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Alderman Lauer?
Well, I guess I'll open the, the thing back up. I, I haven't changed my stance since last year when we were discussing the budget. Um, it's my opinion that we're already paying property tax. Those, uh, amounts should be high on the, uh, priority level. And, uh, they should have been funded, uh, many years in the past. Um, we've been paying taxes and, and intending, uh, to make those payments, uh, all along. And, uh, many of the other things that, uh, uh, would not come in as high on the priority, uh, list probably should be looked at much more seriously. Um, I would think that, uh, you know, the bonding companies would, um, recognize that as well. So conversely, we're already, and we should be thinking about, about this in this manner, we're already paying those taxes. And, and we should be dedicating that in that manner and, and thinking about it in that manner. And then when we go to look at many of these, uh, items that have less priority, um, such as the zoo expansion, such as the downtown street lighting, such as many of the other ancillary expenses that we're, um, exposing ourselves to, maybe they shouldn't have the level of funding that we currently are funding them with. Uh, and, and that's my opinion. Uh, I think that's probably the opinion of many of my constituents. Many of them, um, want to see it flat. They want to see no increase in the levy at all. It does vary year to year. Um, many years they have paid more than they possibly, uh, uh, should have, um, you know, in many opinions. And, um, and so, uh, this would be a bit of a, an economic, um, um, boon to the city. Many of, uh, many of the folks would spend that and it would recirculate in our economy probably up to seven times. Um, and so those are, um, uh, a consideration on the other side that we should be, uh, looking at as well. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Alderwoman Sterns.
Okay. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's interesting that the discussion seems to center around not how can we, how can we maximize the tax money we already have by prioritizing it, but how can we get more? Um, I was anticipating an increase in the levy, and I do understand totally that we're very fortunate. I, I, I say fortunate because real estate values are, you know, somewhat called into question, especially with the consideration of one of our major employees, employers, excuse me, our most obviously major employer making some big changes. And I, I've gotten a couple of calls from people saying, you know, I'm taking off for Atlanta or Texas or wherever. By the way, those are low-tax states, so that is really, really interesting. Um, but we don't seem to, we don't seem to, to look at that and get any kind of message. Um, so the levy going up, we're in a fortunate position. EAV is, we think, going up if it stays up. So that means that we can increase our levy and people might see the same tax bill or even a little bit less. They might. But my question says it all, and I appreciate the answer that I did get. Um, if the tax levy stays the same and the estimated assessed value goes up, as it seems to be doing, the actual property tax bill would go down. And it would if we didn't increase our levy. Um, we had a wonderful, I thought it was good. Some of you probably didn't like it. At about 4:40 this afternoon, a, a seemingly engaged citizen said, "Have mercy on us taxpayers here in the city of Bloomington. Have mercy. Let us, this is our money." And used a term of, you know, "You people are ravenous. You have an unlimited appetite for our money." Um, I think we should leave the levy as it is. I think we should, um, let people maybe have a couple of dollars of property taxes back. Does anyone really understand how high property taxes are here in the state of Illinois? If you don't, talk to your friends around the country because it's, it's really, it's nearly abusive, what we pay in property taxes. It takes a tremendous amount out of what people could be spending in the community, as Kevin said, the discretionary income, which is an economic incentive. It is economic development. If people have more of their own money to spend. Now, I realize this is just an estimate. I realize this is the estimated levy. We don't have to keep it here. We don't know what the EAV is going, going to be. But I think that the, that the fact that it's higher certainly suggests to me that we want it to be higher. And frankly, I don't want it to be higher. I want to show some mercy, as our emailer said, to the people of Bloomington. Give them back a little bit of their own money to spend in our local businesses before any more of them close. Thank you.
Okay. Um, Alderman Sage, and then Black?
Yeah, I just need a, a clarification. The, the tax bill that, that citizens pay to the city of Bloomington is actually going down. That, that's, that's the projection. Now, it's not much, but it's going down. Okay? And, and I'd venture to say that probably the other seven taxing bodies, and I haven't seen, I, I know what I've read in the paper, those appear to all be going up. So I would suspect that the city of Bloomington stands alone, um, from all of the, the local taxing, other taxing bodies here, county, school, airport, water district. What the city of Bloomington is collecting is going down in a, a couple of dollars, uh, you know, here, give or take, right? And, and, and furthermore, I guess, I, I'm always interested, um, whenever I hear suggestions about what we might do with, with the property tax revenue. I mean, we, we have an obligation to fund our police and fire pension fund. We have an obligation to fund those first responders. Again, I've said before, these are the folks who go into the house, they go into your house and my house when they're on fire. These are the people who, who run towards whenever we would have any type of activity, criminal activity, God forbid gunfire or anything else. These are the people who run towards the gunfire. So, so to, to me, I, I'm always curious whenever people say, "Well, we, we should let people keep more money, uh, uh, keep more of their money." The city of Bloomington is actually doing that. It's not a lot, but, but it is actually happening. And at the same time, um, there, there are gonna be, I, I hope, I'm sure it won't be unanimous, but there'll be majority support to say to the first responders in our city, "We owe you, we owe you the, 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 um, need. But we recognize the need that we have to, to fund the pensions for you, our first responders." Thank you.
Alderman Scott Black.
Thank you. Uh, and sorry for taking two questions here. Um, so walk me through procedurally. I'm, I'm hazy as to, to what happens here. Suppose that this were to not pass, what would the next step be? Because I know we're kind of on a deadline with, with the law for the state.
Well, we do have to adopt an estimate, and that estimate has to be out for 20 days if, if I'm correct. Um, so, um, by statute. And then, um, after 20 days, you can adopt the final. So we try to adopt an estimate early. Uh, give you guys information early, so it would give you plenty of time for discussion, uh, should you so choose. Um, we were going to potentially adopt an estimate tonight and then adopt the final on November 24th or the first, you know, meeting in December. Um, you can pu- push that, um, to that second meeting in December that you're gonna have. Um, I don't think you're gonna meet again close to the holidays. So, um, we tried to get out there early for you guys to have plenty of time of discussion and plenty of time to make a decision. Whatever you do, adopt tonight is final in no way.
So could, you could either go down or up from this point? Okay. So I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay.
I would point out, though, if it was gonna go up more than 5% of the actual first level, we do need to, uh, cover a public hearing.
Right. And also just to clarify, I mean, uh, certainly I, I think, I don't like my property tax bill. When I bought my house four years ago, it was $7,000. It's $8,400 now. Uh, none of that has to do with the city of Bloomington. I pay less to the city of Bloomington now than when I bought my house, 'cause it went down in 2012, just to, to clarify that. Mr. Hales, the last word, and then we're gonna vote.
Just one other comment I, I might add, that we have not, as a city, done very good in trying to keep pace with capturing what I'll call new growth assessment. And that is as private businesses put up buildings, as we add 100 homes here, there, things like that, if we're not raising that tax levy, we're not capturing the property tax that is to be, or should be paid by that new growth. And many states, they, they really try to break out that new growth because they realize, and we should realize, that as new businesses go in, as new homes go in, our cost of service goes up. It doesn't go down. And you could make an argument, it doesn't go flat, because as we add, again, uh, businesses, more manpower, what we should at least do to maintain equilibrium is capture that new growth in property tax through the levy, just to kind of maintain and be able to afford, uh, the services we provide to those entities, police, fire, et cetera. So, uh, going forward in the future, we'll try and better see if we can't work with the county to break out, what is there of that equalized assessed valuation that is truly new growth? new growth that if we're not raising property tax levy, we're actually reducing the amount of funding we have to continue to expand our ability to service those properties?
Okay.
So just something else to think about.
All right. All right, well, we're out of time, but go ahead. You haven't spoken yet, and then a very quick redirect by Alderman Lauer, I guess.
Sorry, I stepped out, so the motion is to approve what the staff recommended.
Correct. Okay.
Just so I'm clear, those areas that you're talking about, when we don't properly allocate the EAV, I understand that, but those are primarily areas that don't have the type of tax that we do here. We've got a much larger volume of tax. We're taxing our individuals much greater than many of the areas throughout the United States. We have a very high level of taxation in the state of Illinois right now. Is that correct?
But not the city of Bloomington?
Well, not like on the East Coast. I mean, even out in Oregon, I've seen taxing rates are much higher. But I think my point, again, is that what you see really happening is school costs, you know, and I think, as Alderman Sage mentioned, 13 cents of every dollar of property tax paid comes to the city. It's the school districts and the reduction in state aid funding that is shooting and really exponentially increasing the amount of additional tax burden on our residents and including us. It's not the city that is really behind much of the property taxing.
That was my point earlier, is that I pay about $1,000 of my $8,400 to the city, and it's actually lower than it was when I bought the house. Anyway, okay, did you want to follow through?
I just want to follow up very quickly. You know, what I did was, and I have something that I could forward to you guys, but, you know, of all the overlapping task districts of the city of Bloomington resident house, which does include Unit 5, last year, that your total aggregate rate went up 11%, almost 12%. That was not due to Bloomington. It went up 6% the year before. That was not due to Bloomington, and it went down in that third year. They'll reach a point where the aggregate rate is outpacing, like Decatur and Springfield and some of our peer communities, which are all higher than us in aggregate. This is a 25% revenue, 25% of your general fund. It is a place that you can go. You know, when we close the door on that, that is 25% of that revenue. So if you can reach, you know, kind of that happy medium, it doesn't come along often where you can raise some revenue and it's of little to no impact potentially, or the least impact on the taxpayer. It's kind of a win-win when you have some of the financial struggles that we have. But to let you know that as the overlapping districts have been increasing over the last five years, except for that in '09 when the city had its issues, it is not because of Bloomington, and we will miss out on that piece of the pie, you know, again.
Okay. All right. I think we've done this, so let's go ahead and vote.
Okay.
The, let's see. Motion carries five to three. There are three nays to announce. Madam Clerk.
The three nays are Alderman Lauer, Sterns, and Black.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Now, we move on to our last action item of the night, and that is removal of the barrier on West Jefferson Street and Allen Street. And the recommendation is that the resolution be adopted before, again, once, I'll ask if there is a motion to approve and a second before we begin discussion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve as presented.
Moved by Alderman Black. Is there a second?
So moved.
Second by Alderwoman Howman. Okay. Excuse me. Who'd like to speak to this? Alderwoman Schmidt and Black and Lauer, in that order.
Okay. Thank you. I know that the city's been working on this for a long time. It's been over two years now. I had a couple of questions, just for clarification, I guess for Jim Karch. At our last conversation where we had our public hearing, there were two recommendations that were, or suggestions made by neighbors. One was that we continue the one-way street on Jefferson going east. And I believe the city proposal was that from Allen going east, it would be two-way. And then the other was that instead of opening it up all the way, that it would be some kind of a diet that would enable first responders, trash, whatever, but would continue to keep traffic at a low ebb. And where are we with those things?
Alderman Schmidt, one at a time, I'll address the issue of the one-way. That was looked at, and staff actually probably would be in favor of that if it wouldn't impact a specific business. Salvation Army did reach back out and discuss the traffic pattern of their receiving bay and the way that truck movements need to occur. They are unable to lawfully accept delivery. So because of that, staff backed away from that recommendation of that extension of the one-way. So it would remain more of that two-way traffic east of Allen. But then in the second one, that is still actually under review by the Staff Traffic Advisory Committee for, with the considerations of any other, you know, anything else they can do. So opening that up doesn't preclude any additional measures to be done, but it's still being evaluated.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I am going to assert what I assume is going to be a minority perspective and vote against this. And the reason I'm doing that is that over the course of the last couple of years, the people who are living particularly to the east of Allen, I think I'm speaking both frankly and truthfully in saying that they really feel that they didn't ask for this to happen, and they don't feel that their ideas have been heard. And I really do understand the safety concerns that we hear from the police and fire and the difficulties that our Public Works people have in maneuvering the street. But nevertheless, when I, I have to reflect what I'm hearing, and I think people deserve to hear their voice up here, and so I intend to vote against this. Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Alderman, Black, and Lauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jim, for that answer. I know that's been a common one in the neighborhood. And I just wanted to thank staff for all the time and effort that they've put in thus far. We've had several public meetings. We've done surveys, trying to get some feedback, although we wish the participation in the survey were a little bit higher. I think, would we have like eight, nine responses? Yes. You know, I received many phone calls about this exact topic, both for and against. I think this is one of those ones where I don't think that everyone's going to be happy, but I think that based on the feedback that we've gotten from our public engagement and the phone calls, like, I think this is the direction that we can go. You know, we can, down the road, if there are still issues, I guess pun intended, down the road, we can, we can take a look at this again, you know, and maybe not in such a permanent fixture that was done in the past. And I'm certainly open to different approaches Public Works might have for, you know, road dieting or whatever that might be. But I'm excited. This is, this to me is an example of where we've engaged a number of people. Not everybody's going to be happy with the ultimate outcome, but we listen to the public and we're responding accordingly, so thank you.
I think, as I recall at the meetings, that we went to most of the people, I think it was literally three, almost like three to six to two or something, seemed to be in favor of it. But anyway, Alderman, Lauer, and then Sterns.
Just so that everybody's completely informed here, the public included, we've had many discussions on this. And the original reason that this was closed was to alleviate some of the crime that was happening in the area, violent crime. And the fact that we also discussed with Jim Karch that once we do open the street up, replace the curb and gutter pavement, et cetera, very quickly, we can move to, if we experience an uptick in the crime and the violent crime in the area, we can bring in those, we have the technology now, we can bring in those temporary or semi-temporary cement barriers and block the street off. And we could even call an emergency session here and make that happen overnight if we had to, right? Right, Mayor? If we had an uptick and those concerns were not, you know?
Very easily, yeah.
Okay. And so really, I don't know why we wouldn't do this from a public safety standpoint. Thank you.
Alderwoman's turn.
Well, I guess I just, you know, to me, Karen, it's your ward. Is that right?
It's split between Scott and me.
Oh, is it split between the two of you? Okay. So I guess I'm just a little bit, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the residents down there because, you know, you're in touch with them, and I'm really, you know, not that much. I mean, I think that's one of the advantages of having the ward system. So if I'm hearing this correctly, Scott, you're sort of telling us that the residents are for opening it?
I would not say it was unanimous for opening it. I think that there's concern, residual concern about the crime issues from the past, and there's, but there's, most, the original impetus for this that brought to my attention was a gentleman had called me because of, he would see issues happening around the Friendship Park area, and they would go across the barrier, making it difficult for the police to get over to address the issue. At that point, we brought in some staff who had made mention of those same issues. That being said, some of the opposition that we've heard is that it might impact the traffic flow and where crime might go. We may be taking one issue, moving it down to another block. Totally can understand that. The historical aspect to it, and, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Karen, if I'm mischaracterizing this, some of the issues that happened in the past could resurface. In talking with the chief, he mentioned that the primary concern in 1997, when this was placed in there, the house that was the big issue, tenants have changed, owners have changed, and that's been removed. So that's something that we talk about as well. But it's certainly not unanimous. People on Jefferson have been, I've heard some negative. I've also heard begrudging support, like, oh, this might, I'm very concerned about what this might look like. But I've also received very vocal support of the removal of the barrier.
And?
And I would add to that, and Scott's right, there's, it's not unanimous one way or the other. I think what concerns me is the sense of the folks who are living on the eastern side of Allen, a feeling that their suggestions haven't been heard, their concerns haven't been heard, and it's kind of a polarizing topic. And for me, I just feel the obligation to make sure that the people who are feeling really not very happy about this are heard up here as well as the others who may support this, so.
Okay. Yeah, I can definitely see both, both sides of it. Thank you.
Okay. All right? Okay. At this point, we'll go ahead and vote. Okay. The motion passes seven to one. Madam Clerk?
The lone nay vote is Alderman Schmidt.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. Now, Mr. Hales, City Manager's Discussion.
Mayor, I don't have anything to report tonight.
Okay. I just have two quick things. First of all, although she's still going to be with us for a couple more months, Tracy Culvert, we want to thank you for decades of dedicated service and really an astounding level of historic knowledge. That is incredible. Thank you, Tracy. If I give you a round of applause. I think Madam Clerk was slightly embarrassed. She's like...
Do you record that?
The other thing is, I've had some queries, and I suspect our aldermen and women have as well, this is the time to put out your leaves. Jim, right? We're coming around, and if we don't get you this time, because we know they're still falling, we're going to come back again, right?
Not in the street.
And not in the street. Not good. Not prudent. Okay, good. That's all I have. And aldermen and women, I'll start from my left to right. Who would like to? Any comments? Oh, come on, Kevin, you've all...
I've got just a little to add to your comment there. We do have a number of very good citizens that are very reconnoisseur and recognize the fact that our grain, our storm drains do plug up with those leaves, and they get out there as volunteers and unplug them and make sure that they're not, they're not going to plug up on us. And so that's a huge thank you to the citizens, being very aware of that and the expense that the city has to go to when they do plug up. So, thank you.
Awesome. Alderwoman's turn.
So are we going around?
You're last, I guess.
Am I it? Oh, wow, that's amazing. And I like that, going around. Obviously, Mayor Kousa does that. You know, yeah, well, you were at the meeting the other night, but I thought it was nice because it just, you know, everybody gets a chance, and that's it. Just real quick, I didn't get another shot at the tax levy, but I do want to say that I hope everyone understands that obviously, my point was that the EAV, we're lucky, it's up. So citizens could get more back. We don't know how it's going to end up. Right now, if it stays, everything stays constant, maybe they'll get a dollar or two. But if we kept the levy the same, they would get more. That is my point. And clearly, this issue, like a lot of, it's nice to frame it that this is all police and fire pensions. No, it isn't. This is income revenue to the city. And my point is, I think the city has a spending problem. I don't think it has a revenue problem. I think it would be economically incentive, incentivizing if we gave, let our citizens keep more of their money. Now, when it comes to funding police and fire pensions, no one has stood up for that like I have my entire tenure on the council. And, you know, keeping the levy a little bit, keeping it stable, I'm not asking, we can reduce it. That, in my opinion, would be even better. But keeping it stable would allow our citizens to keep a little bit more money. Maybe it would set an example to the other taxing bodies. I don't know. But police and fire must be funded. We all know that, all of us. Every single one of us has stood for that. And to imply that anyone is not standing up for that is simply wrong. It's just a question of where we get it. Thank you so much.
Okay. At this point, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Moved by Alderwoman Schmidt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Howman. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, or adjourned? Thank you.